County Commission, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd just like to remind everyone to silence their cell phones. It's usually a reminder to me to double check. We do have listening devices here. If anyone needs one, you can see Tyler or Carol at the table. And we do have absentee voting next door, so in support of the elections, we'd like to try to keep the noise in the hallways to a minimum if possible. Thank you. All right, that takes us to routine business. I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is taking a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Kipley.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, so that takes us to regular business. Our first item is a public hearing to consider three 2023 retail on and off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine licenses. Good morning, Ben.
Good morning, Commissioners, Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. We have, we, the Auditor's Office, has received an application for three on sale liquor, retail on off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm license for Triple J. This, the application is located at 7603 East Arrowhead Parkway in Sioux Falls. Somebody might know that as the Alibi Bar location. Each application is for a different suite within that address listed on the application. License would allow for sale of malt beverages, South Dakota farm wine beverages at their establishments located in Minnehaw County. Triple J does currently hold a retail on sale liquor license and retail on off sale malt beverage license at that same location. The applications were sent to the Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney's Office, and the Planning Office. No other concerns other than the Planning Office had a concern that the zoning for that parcel is currently at C commercial and a bar lounge is a conditional use in that, for that zoning district, the applicant, the owner, has not applied for a conditional use permit, but they've been notified that there's a requirement for that. So the Planning Department would recommend that a condition be added to indicate that the alcohol license will only be active when a conditional use permit is obtained. In addition, the building would need to have a new plan review completed for the building code as current plans approved for an office building. Yeah, so those are kind of the details. So it asks either for your consideration. You could either approve the request based upon the conditional use permit. You could deny the request until the conditional use permit or what other actions you might think is appropriate.
Are there questions for Ben? Commissioner Karski.
Retail liquor, is that just beer and wine then?
Yes.
Okay, good. Just looking at the application, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Ben, I'd like to just clarify too. I believe this is for the new location for the Alibi Bar. There is a current location, and I think that they're going to move across Arrowhead Parkway. And so that's, just so that there's an understanding as to why the CUP is required?
That could be, I'm not, they haven't given us that detail. I'm not sure if there's anybody here from the Alibi or the owners to speak on that, but that could be.
Somebody here? You can come up to the mic and just clarify that maybe for us.
Hi, I'm Chrissy Johnson. I'm the owner. It is for the current location that is existing. The new place, the Alibi, is not moving. That's a completely separate business going over there. That new location is operated under a different name. It's going to be a family restaurant. And then, so it's going to be one big roof, but it's going to have three separate businesses under it. It'll have a family pizza style restaurant, and then it'll be a bar, and then there'll be a casino on the end of that. So this is for the current location that's existing. We're working with our contractor to determine if we're going to remodel what we currently have, and then we also have plans to build a new building, but it looks like our current location, the current building is going to work for our plans.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions? You might stay up there because this is a public hearing, but Commissioner Karski.
So there's already a retail liquor license for that location?
Correct.
And you want to add three more?
Correct.
For that location for?
Malt beverage ones, yeah. Not liquor, but, yep.
Okay, so there'd be full alcohol and three malt beverage licenses. Okay. I think the reasons why are obvious, but, okay. How big of a building is that?
I can't tell you the total square footage.
I haven't been in it, so I don't know.
Top of my head. You know, our contractor's done the plans. He said our current one does have plenty of square foot, but we are, you know, like I said, potentially might just build all new. I can't tell you the square footage.
Okay.
All right, so this is a public hearing, and so I'd allow anybody in favor of this to speak, which I'm guessing might be you. So is there anything else you want to add?
No, I can answer any other questions, but no.
Any other questions? Commissioner Karski.
Not of Christine, but maybe Scott. I mean, this is joint jurisdictional, correct? Has this already been approved at any level, way, shape, or form? Or, I mean, are we the first bite at the apple, so to speak, for this?
So I guess, honestly, I'm a little bit confused myself because I was under the assumption that this liquor license application was for the new building that TJ Cameron built, where his fireworks business is at. Is that correct?
No, we have nothing to do with him.
Because the address that was provided was for that structure. So I'm confused myself on what's going on. Because the, the, the application on the, that was sent to me to review was next to the location in the new building that TJ Cameron just built. He has his fireworks, new fireworks business in there. There's an empty space that's next to that, and that was the address that was provided to me to review. That new location has, it's, it's, it's an empty, it's an empty shell, basically, and that was what the auditor had provided me to review. That location does not have a conditional use permit. It's basically unfinished, it's an unfinished office building or space in a, in a, in a building. So I hate to throw a wrench in this, but I don't want to get the, I don't want to get the train too far down the track if we're not in the right location either.
Christine, can you address that? I'm sorry.
Well, I guess I'm confused. The application, the address on there is 7605, and that is our address. So I don't know how it's tied into the, the one down the road, but our address on the application is 7605, which is our current address. Correct? Yeah, okay.
That's the application, the address we had in the application. Maybe we gave the wrong address to the Planning Office. I don't know.
So everything on the application is done legally and correctly?
Yeah, yes, with our address.
I was, I'm wondering if Scott can come forward and confirm what address he was looking at?
Well, the legal description is Suite 101 of Lot A, and I believe that isn't, I believe that to be the location of TJ Cameron's new business.
Scott, can you explain to us what our options are to give you guys some time to clear this up before we vote on this?
Well, from, from, from my point of view or, or business or the, you know, what, my requirements is simply that before they would be open and allowed to operate a bar, they're going to need a conditional use permit. So you can approve the, you can approve the license today, but it would not be able to be used until they, until they obtained the conditional use permit.
Commissioner Karski.
There's already a conditional use permit approved for this location for the one license already, though, correct?
No. It's grandfathered in. I believe that, I'm not sure that there's a conditional use permit. I didn't look at the, the existing location because I was under the assumption it was in the
A different location.
Different location, the, the Suite 101.
Okay. Sounds like it needs to be cleaned up and everybody have an understanding of it, and I'd probably be looking to bring this back in two weeks.
Is that the, can somebody clarify for me if that's timing? Can we defer it for two weeks and bring it back at that time? Okay, it looks like we can do that. So was that a motion?
That would be a motion. Yep. That would be, what, February 7th? I would second that.
So we have a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call vote on that, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, we'll look at this again in a couple of weeks. Commissioner Karski.
Yeah, just for Scott. So I guess the question that hangs out there is if there is a CUP already for this location for a liquor license, we're not, they wouldn't have to go back for an additional CUP for, to add more licenses. We would just be approving the license.
Correct. If there's a conditional use permit to allow a bar establishment, a bar lounge, I think is the way it's defined in our zoning ordinance, then, then they're fine. I don't care. I mean, the conditional use permit doesn't specify
How many?
How many licenses you have. It's the use, and the use wouldn't be changing. And I'll, I'll quick, in the next two weeks, make sure that we have the right legal description. I'll work with the auditor to make sure that we're all understanding where that's at, because
And if this is grandfathered in, does it still fall under that clause?
Yes. It would be fine. If it's grandfathered in, adding new liquor licenses is not an expansion of the use.
Okay, okay.
So I'll do some checking and have some definitive answers for you in two weeks.
Yep, clean it up. Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you very much. All right, so that takes us to item 11, which is the briefing on emergency medical services in Minnehaw County. Dr. Luther, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dr. Jeff Luther, the Quality Assurance Director for Minnehaw County's Ambulance Association EMS. I'm not sure exactly the end part of that title, but I do all of our quality assurance. What I wanted to do today was our fourth quarter report as well as our annual, but as a segue, I think if I did a little history for our new, newer Commissioners, I kind of give them an idea where we came from, and I'll try and be brief if that's possible. Basically, several years ago, and I was trying to think about that this morning, and I'm thinking 20, maybe more, we had an ambulance issue whereby, you know, historically, volunteer ambulance services have always had some difficulties. But back then, there was an attempt to establish primary service areas based on lots of things: fair weather roads, agreements, dispatching strategies, and we're able to accomplish that. And with that, the county has helped out these primary service areas with some funding sources. What we have done with that, then, there has been some caveats or contingencies. And some of that is to have a medical director or somebody do a quality assurance review. Each primary service area, each ambulance district must have their own medical director. So I'm really not the medical director. I'm more of the quality assurance overseer, if you will, but I have direct communication with all other medical directors anyways. But what we did then is we established, what are the important things to do? And that is, one, to look at quality assurance from a response time perspective, and then also some performance indicators that we develop. And part of those that we have done for a long time have been set for the basic life support level. Well, let's evolve further where there has now been a expansion, an expansion into these services doing advanced life support. And with advanced life support has, is much more complex. There's more performance indicators to look at. We'll talk about those once we get into the report. The ambulance services now have access to Image Trends. That's the state software to prepare their reports, and I review patient care reports. So once the report is done, that goes into a reporting process. I can pull those, and then I can filter those even further to review these performance indicators that, again, we'll talk about. So stop me if I get too far ahead or get into the weeds. But what we wanted to do first is, I looked at these, this is the fourth quarter, then followed by the, the annual report. So our very first slide there is the number of patient care reports, that's PCR, submitted for each quarter since 2001. And you can see the fourth quarter, which is the very last one, there's, was a spike in the number, and we'll talk about those. The, the orange bar is the average number of PCRs that are submitted. So you'll see a bronze bar or a blue bar, and it'll always either be the total count then with the average, if that's kind of a, a way of telling you how that, we have this set up. So that's kind of that. If there aren't any questions, I'll talk a little bit more in detail per a narrative and then some other graphics about the total number of PCRs. So we look at the number of PCRs reviewed, and again, remember I talked about these performance indicators that were put up in the ordinance years and years ago. And that required us to review, them to submit, and me to review, all cardiac arrest reviews, pediatric calls, trauma calls, any airway management calls, STEMI, which is, stands for ST, Elevated Myocardial Infarction. That's, that's the acute coronary syndrome, the heart attacks, and then the stroke type calls, then 25% random review of all calls. And so that's what I did in this fourth quarter. And then if we look at the next slide, which we talk about the patient care reports needing follow-up. Now, what does that mean? That those fallout for review could be related to anything. And most of the time, it's either a documentation issue. It's usually not a care issue. And you can see of all the quarters, there's only been one that has fallen out. Now, these can come to me by one, either I'll recognize something that's, did they mean to give epinephrine 1 to 1,000 or 1 to 10,000, which is a big deal, and so those will fall out. Or was there some concern from the destination about, you know, did they have cervical spine immobilized or something like that? And there's only been one per quarter, and those have all been resolved. And I have access, I talk with the, we have an ambulance governance meeting that we try to meet. It's been difficult because of lots of circumstances, including the, but not limited to COVID. But I do have opportunities to talk with the medical directors in as much as Humboldt, Garrettson, Del Rapids. And if there's a concern, I can go directly to them. And the other safety net that we have, if there is a concern with care provision, non-ordinance related, patient care related, then I can get information from the destination. They contact me if there's a concern. So I think the commission and the citizens know that there's, there's loops closed for quality assurance. But this is really good. There's not that many that drop out. But when I do training of paramedics, there's, there are a lot of things that we talk about. One is the importance of documentation. If it's not documented, it didn't happen. It's very difficult for me to provide QA if, if the documentation, documentation isn't complete. But the other two are medication related and scene time related, and the scene time specifically for trauma and strokes and heart attacks. We have windows of opportunity where we got to get these patients moved and to a destination for treatment. And then the medications. There are so many medications that look alike, sound alike, spell alike, and not only that, there's, there's routes of administration, intramuscular. You'll see IO, that's, that's interosseous, where we can go right into the bone. So there's lots of performance indicators, and these measures weren't available with BLS. So you can see the complexity of care delivery in the county has really changed with the advent of going to ALS. So we look at all of those and take into consideration that any of these calls, that there is an untoward outcome. Those are reviewed in detail. The next slide, we're going to talk about, a little bit about the percentage of calls that are impacted by COVID. Now, how do I know that? Well, we have in our emergency medical dispatching protocols, questionnaire set in place by their academy, and the call taker asked the requesting party several questions that could lead us down the trail that this may be COVID related. Usually it's respiratory, fevers, those sorts of things, or exposures. And you can see since this whole COVID started, that, you know, there's a, there's an impact on the, the call. As we start the call from the minute the requesting party dials 911, we'll get information. That sets into motion things that, you know, considerations for protective or personal protective equipment, those sorts of things. So, but there's, there's other things that we just probably don't have enough time. I'll try and talk about those, about the future impact of COVID. I think everybody's heard about Long COVID. It's a list that's pretty impressive with respect to new clinical syndromes and, and how COVID, post-COVID, the non-vaccinated, what have you have developed these syndromes that are, that are sometimes peculiar, and are longer lasting, and we anticipate that to impact our, our EMS system. Next slide then, we'll go to graphics here a little bit, and you can see that this is kind of the top 10 impressions. And again, through the image trend and the patient care report, the paramedic, once he completes his report, will put in there his primary impression, what, what he thought or she thought was the reason for, not necessarily the call, but what they seen and what they've triaged and are attempting to treat. So it's a whole list of things that start from cardiac, gastrointestinal injuries. There's a thing in there for other, you know, pain, psychiatric calls, respiratory, stroke, syncope is fainting, and then trauma. And then there's a matching color correspondence for that pie. So that's, those are a list of the top 10 impressions of what we see out there in terms of call nature. Next slide is our interventions. Now, again, you heard me talk about what we looked at in terms of performance indicators years ago and how they've changed. Years ago in the BLS, you know, did we immobilize the spine? Did we get a blood pressure? Those sorts of things. Now, we have much more sophisticated and advanced life support types of performance indicators to monitor. And then you can see that there could be a potential in, in any of those interventions for some error. And they go through, again, we check blood sugar, they start IVs, they do assessments, primary, secondary, they monitor with cardiac monitoring, they do 12 VDKGs, and of course, chest compressions. The IGEL is an airway that we have out in the community that is actually at the basic life support level. And this is a, this is a remarkable device. This, this is a bridge airway, but it's actually a destination or definitive airway. Typically, we think of endotracheal intubation, where they, they put the tube down into the lungs. This is what's referred to as supraglottic, but it's very easily placed and it's very effective. So we've been doing that now for a few years, and it's really, I think, impacted our outcomes. IO, again, is interosseous. That's where they put a, it's a, it's a bone access. They use a special device, a needle that breaches the cortex or the outside of the bone, goes into the bone marrow, and that's where they can resuscitate using fluids or medications. And it's actually used pretty routinely. And the ETI is the endotracheal intubation. Now, we do what's called pit crew CPR, and that's a, if you can imagine, a pit crew like at NASCAR where there's a person on all four wheels, somebody putting gas in, all that. But this is something that we do at cardiac arrests. And so we have first responders there, whoever that might be. Could be deputy sheriffs that are EMTs, first responders, and they all will have a, an assigned sequence that they participate in. They may be doing chest compressions until somebody comes in that may have a little more equipment or a higher level of training, who may put a, it's called a Lucas device. That's a device that does chest compressions. Then there's somebody that's starting the IV, and we, in cardiac arrests, they do interosseous, they start the IV in the bone, which is out of the way of doing chest compressions and/or airway management. So there's kind of a four-pointed, five-pointed system where everybody has a position to take care in this resuscitative event, and it's, it's pretty impressive. The next slide is, again, you heard me talk about the medications, which is important in terms of reviewing performance indicators, because a lot of these medications, they all have to be delivered consistently. The dosages, dosages have to be calculated precisely. There's routes of administration, again, IV, intramuscular, interosseous, even down the endotracheal tube. And then there's concentrations of those medications. So the ones that we use are epinephrine, which is adrenaline, Zofrans, an anti-nausea medicine. We use fentanyl for pain, Narcan, which is big. That's, that's been one of the most significant impacts, in my opinion, to our system. We have lots of cases where first responders, including our deputy sheriffs, have done wake-ups and opioid overdoses. Dexos is sugar. Albuterol is a medication used to treat asthma or airway constriction. Nitroglycerin bicarbonate is used. This is a medication that's that buffers the blood in an acidotic environment. For example, if somebody has been in cardiac arrest for a prolonged period, and then aspirin, antacetaminophen, or Tylenol, which are now very important in terms of pain. The next slide, these are the fourth quarter calls by the day of week, and you can see where the average is. And actually, you, there's a little spike in Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays. I, I don't have an explanation for that, but you can see the number of average calls per day a week and kind of get an idea just when we are the busiest. You'd think maybe Friday and Saturdays would be busier, but those calls typically involve more serious types of calls. Those are your trauma calls and overdoses and things like that, by nature of it just being on a weekend, I guess. So you can look at the hours of the day. This is that next slide, kind of give you an idea of when our calls peak.
Quick question. So 5 o'clock in the evening, there's 35 calls. That was for the whole quarter. It's not to say there's 35 calls per day on, at that hour.
Right.
Okay, so that was for the whole quarter?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
And then I don't know if I have a slide for the, in our, in the annual that's, that's broken down to this. I can't remember. We'll get to that. But this is more slides of interest, because I've been able to pull that, that information. And, you know, there, there are some, you know, calls that, that peak, you know, rush hour traffic types of situations. And if we talk about the dispositions, and then we'll get into this a little bit more detail, but you can see where most of our medical calls are, they occur in the home, but if we look at the percentages of these calls that are treated and then transported, that's, that's our top bar there. And so we're a little over 60%, which is pretty consistent in the EMS world as far as calls and then response, and then to the patient, the care provided, and then the disposition. We're going to transport them. Those that aren't transported, we'll go down this list here. And probably one of the more important ones is the next one, where patient refuses treatment, and we call those PRAs, patient refuses service. Those carry some risk, and it can be, you know, anything from a juvenile patient where there's a bystander called 911, parents are there, and they elected to assume care. Lots of times, we get to calls where the person doesn't want call, and you kind of scratch your head, why'd you call me in the first place? But regardless, sometimes the anxiety, the, the nature of the condition, whatever it might be, is just might be, is just relaxed by the fact that EMS is there. They've done some evaluation, but we do ask our providers to be certain that they have a patient refuses service sign, there's a document. Because we really don't have a way of knowing all the time that the person is competent to make a medical decision on their own. So th- those are important. And that is also pretty consistent with what we see in terms of total numbers. The rest of them are, have lots of other reasons there that just kind of follow down the risk, list there. And in that fourth quarter, they're pretty small, you know, ones, one offs, two offs, in terms of the reasons why they didn't get transported. Now, the next slide is, we made a, a big issue because we think that response times are very crucial. They are, in terms of how we dispatch individuals to the scene. Now, these, these are call-response times. This is the dispatch to on-scene. And this gives you the number of minutes. Now, remember, we're out in the county, and we're going to break these down a little bit in the next slide, too. But I just wanted to do this as kind of an overarching thing. This is the number that gives us the call-response times. Again, that's from the minute that's dispatched to these services arriving on-scene. And then per the ordinance, we will recall, and we'll talk a bit about this, is that they have 60 seconds, the service has 60 seconds to acknowledge they received the call from the dispatch center. 10 minutes they get per ordinance to respond to the station and pick up the vehicle. That's how it used to be. It's a little different now because we are in a situation where we, a lot of the cases, there's somebody right at the station that can respond, as opposed to waiting for a volunteer to get his dispatch call and then take his personal vehicle, get to the station, and then go to the scene. But that still occurs. So, and if we look at the next slide there, we'll have this again, the fourth quarter. These are average runtimes. And again, I talked to you about the average unit notified to en route. That's that amount of time that happens from the minute that they get their page, that they're en route to the vehicle, or to the station. And then that's the next metric. You can see the average unit en route to arrive. That's where they're ready and have their equipment and they're in their vehicles and they're progressing now to the scene. And that's the next slide that gives me a time from once they're dispatched to the time that they arrive on-scene. The next one slide there, it says average time, average scene to at destination, which is, includes their scene time. So this is the, the minute the clock starts to the time they're there and to the time that they are ready to transport that patient. And again, we talked about some of those scenarios where scene time is very important. Those that are related to trauma, the STEMI or the heart attacks, and the stroke calls. And we have lots of ability to do lots of things in the, in the EMS world at the, the paramedic level. They can start large bore IVs, they can do lots of stuff, but in trauma, the treatment of choice is often the operating room. So we stress that. But this includes those scene times. And then the last metric is the average times for destination to in-service. So I'll break that out just a little bit more detail in the following slides. If, if it seems a little confusing, it makes sense to me, but we're also matching this up to what the ordinance requires. But there's some quality metrics in there, and the, this, these time slots that are important to me to review. And it's, it's sometimes difficult to, to convey the specifics of that. I'll do my best in the next slides.
So are the numbers cumulative on the, on that bar?
Yes.
So it's 30 minutes plus 25 minutes plus 17 minutes.
Yeah, and you can kind of see where it ends. Those are, again, kind of averages. So if we take, let's, let's just look at the units notified and to en route, you know, we're under four minutes. So they're, they're on their way. They get 10 minutes to get there. I mean, or, or acknowledge that the 60 seconds, I got the call, and then 10 minutes to get where they're at. This slide will end up probably going away because they have staff. Again, that was, I, I don't want to speak too, too quickly, but a lot of the stations have staff now that are, they're 24/7, but not always. And so we still have this in our ordinance and we want to look at that. Because I think that over the years, we've proven that they can receive the call and get to where they need to be and with the resources that they have over the years. And again, notwithstanding things like COVID, the tripledemic, all those sorts of things, they, they have been able to get there despite downward trends in volunteerism. And I'll get to that, too, we'll talk a little bit about that. So there's, there's not a, there's nothing at the end of the rainbow here, but we look at, you know, those folks that are involved in this, the, the esprit de corps of volunteerism is strong, but once it attritions out, you know, it's just, it's tough to get young folks now to volunteer because it's not easy to do this. And again, the, the next slide, if we move to that, I had talked about where most, most cardiac arrests, most sickness calls, all of those that are in that, those categories that we had before occur at the home. And I'll talk, I did send out an, an article, I'll touch on that very briefly. It just came in, it was just a poll, and I sent that out, and you can read that at your leisure, but that kind of confirms where most of our calls happen is in the home. The second majority of call types are trans or occur in townhouses, there's still residencies. The third most abundant is in our healthcare facilities, the nursing homes, assisted livings, and then of course, we just trickle down into the highway or the street, this general public places. But again, the, the stress point was that we respond most frequently to calls in their home. And that article I sent out was, kind of demonstrates that. And then what happens when 911 is called? And what is the public comfortable doing? And years ago, we changed from what we know as CPR, you know, when we think of mouth-to-mouth, we don't do that anymore. And in fact, the most effective thing that we can do is chest compressions, chest compressions only, until the arrival of an AED. And with the whole public access campaign for public access, AEDs has been phenomenal. But still, if you look at the results, they're not that good for unwitness cardiac arrests out in the field. We are able, we start the minute that a bystander calls 911 with pre-arrival instructions, and I'm talking off this, this article that I just sent you, it's just more interesting than anything. But once pre-arrival instructions are given to the individual, we have to then hope that they're receiving the, the requesting party, the, and understanding what to do to move the patient, to position the patient, to do chest compressions. And that poll had showed that 76 or three-quarters of adults polled, they felt prepared to communicate with 911. But there's only over half of them were prepared or reported that they'd be prepared to do chest compressions, and even less to do other things such as tourniquets and stopping bleeding and those sorts of things. And, you know, if we look at what we have in our community, we trend cares, cardiac arrest survival, it's a registry. We've got great numbers. And I'm going to accredit that back to early defibrillation and pit crew CPR. And if it's witnessed in, in our community, and it's, it'll extend into the county, we've got a much higher chance of surviving that. When I say surviving, I'm talking neurologically intact at hospital discharge. Getting them to the hospital alive is one thing, but getting them where they're able to leave the hospital neurologically intact is another. That's the success. And then recently, I don't know if, if you all have looked at that, you know, Darren Hamlin, that young football player that collapsed on the field after he struck in the chest. And it was easy to sit back and go, geez, why are they taking so long and what are they doing? But they were doing early CPR and early intervention such as automatic defibrillation or use a defibrillator, and that young man today is, is up and talking. So timing, and then relentless, consistent chest compressions. When I look at, and I'm able to review calls that are taken from AEDs, and it'll give me, I can see the chest compressions that are being done, and a performance indicator, and I don't do that in the county, but the performance indicator is all these calls where there's CPR, chest compressions are interrupted by more than 10 seconds, we review those. Because every 10-second interruption in chest compressions, your survival chance goes down. So it's so crucial to, once you start chest compressions, to not stop until there's a defibrillator available. And again, pit crew CPR, once we, as an EMS system, respond to that, has been, just tamp them out. That is the fourth quarter report, and I would like to move into the annual, unless anyone has any specific questions. I started my annual here with just kind of a narrative.
Just, just for purposes of time, if maybe you can be more of a, a summary of your annual report as opposed to the detail we got on the fourth quarter.
You know, my, my mom told me, Commissioner Bender, that I'd make a good parking meter. Put 25 cents in, you could park all day. So just shut up and get to the point. I'm so sorry.
Very interesting. I just, there are other people here to get.
I, I apologize. Well, anyway, so I just kind of, again, reiterate the summary and how COVID has impacted us. I think that, you know, early on, we'd seen a spike in calls, but overall, it's remained pretty, pretty consistent. I want to give a shout out to May County Sheriff's deputies. You know, years ago, I approached Millstadt, I said, hey, you know what would be neat to, to help with our crisis in the county as far as ambulance personnel and all of those, is why don't we get some EMTs as deputies, train some deputies as EMTs? And it's been great. And you can see, now, the, the only issue with them is for me to review, which is not part of the ordinance, is that they, the report that they do is not on the image trend. So we have to, we have to dissect out things like forensic evidence and all that stuff. So the, the part that I want has got to be trimmed out, if you will. But anyways, they did a great job, and you can see all the types of calls that they respond to over the year. And if we, next slide we can look at, you can get kind of a perspective as why all this is important. If we're going to talk about response times, their rubber's already on the road. And so they're able to, to travel and get to things. And if we go back to ALS versus BLS, it's the first 90 seconds to two, three minutes of intervention is what saves people's lives. I mean, and what, getting that chest compression started, but also assuring scene safety. Somebody's got to, you know, put that vicious dog away and make sure that, you know, that whole environment is safe for the providers, otherwise we can't do anything. Not only can they provide care, but they can also assure scene safety, too. They got guns and stuff. So the next slide there is kind of an overall, again, in pie charts, this is pretty self-explanatory. I'd be more than happy to talk about that. The left upper is our totals for our calls, and then our response breakdown is by category. And it's supposed to be color matched per the metrics. You can kind of get an idea in the pie charts what all those are. If we look at Del Rapids and, and Garrettson, they've got a couple of nursing home facilities up there, so they're involved heavily in transport, transfers. And that transfer can be to the hospital, back, to the clinics, to all those sorts of things. So their ambulance resources is used for that, and that's why that, they have a higher in proportion number of calls as doing transport. Another kind of a busy slide that go aheads and breaks it out, the incident types. You can look on the bottom exactly what all of those are. And it's from transfers to sick call, sick person, it's very generic, but it's a very common call type. Falls, all your traumas, all those sorts of things are listed there. The next slide then is, again, the response breakdown. That's our, our types of calls. Again, all county calls is in the left upper, and then I broke that out into all of the other services. And then again, this is a graphic for the, the whole year of those response times. And again, going back to what the ordinance had required, the second they get the call to, they're needing to acknowledge and respond to the station, and then we look at the start to, that bottom left is the start time to treatment and our transport. And the other scene is en route, again, which is, I listed in the fourth quarter, but this is for the annual in a bar graph form. And then the total call duration, you can see, that's the right lower or the fourth one. And that's, how long are these guys out of service to, from the start to the hospital, clean up, and then get back out and ready for another call? So that's it. That half, I hoping that I would be more succinct, I apologize for that.
I'm going to open it up to some questions, Commissioner Karski.
Two questions, go back about two, one or two slides. Microphone.
Microphone.
The incident type breakdown, that one. What is 12:00 AM?
Which one? Is that, Commissioner?
Yeah, it's one of the type of deals. It's go stroke hemorrhage, 12:00 AM cardiac arrest. Just an odd.
Overdose? Oh, the, the RNA?
Nope, to the left of that. About four or five. Says there's 51 12:00 AM calls or incidents.
Are, are we looking at incident type breakdown?
Yes. Yep. If you look under number 51, which it might be really small on the one that you have.
Oh, 51. Oh, 12:00 AM, right, that's after shift, or we start the clock again. And so that, that just pulled out and fell out in that. So it really isn't a metric that, that we worry about. The description basically would be, we start the, the clock again after 12:00 AM, which there's a total number of calls at that, that time, whatever dispatching is.
Not a medical condition, 12:00 AM, okay.
But, you know, there's several of those, too, that are not really medical conditions either. Like sometimes there's not a patient available, or they're not there, or you can't find them.
So a lot of information, a lot of data. Any one specific thing that we should really be paying attention to with all this information?
I think that if we look at where we were and where we're at today, we have really come along with respect to who's out there. And we have to consider what's happened in the last two years, too, with, with the impact of COVID in an already dwindling volunteer system and the resources that they have available. And I don't know what the, the long or the short answer is, but I think that, you know, continuing to support as best we can these ambulance services, because they're, they're still out there and the times are phenomenal. And I can't, can't believe that they're, they're, they're still, I'm very proud that they're still able to, to remain in existence. An ambulance service can drop off the map in 12 hours. One day they're there and the next day they're gone. And so that is something that, you know, in this, this community, as we grow, there's more complexity and more diversity, and our calls are now inlaid with things like communication issues, language barriers that were not present years and years ago. So, and again, I think that in my narrative, I talked about the last paragraph, that it's, it's very impressive that despite all of those things and all of those challenges, they've met at least the requirements for the ordinance, which we may want to look at, too. I mean, are, are some of those things necessary in the ordinance? I don't think we've ever not funded based on somebody not meeting the ordinance standards. We haven't passed, fired a shot across the bow with response to, hey, is your ambulance there? And so the commission knows, each of these primary service areas, we have automatic aid and we have mutual aid.
Next question.
So if your truck is up on the jacks and getting the oil changed or something, they, the system will know about that, and then, then we'll, we could do mutual aid. Automatic aid, if for some reason that they don't meet that 60 seconds, nobody's acknowledging, where are you at? We'll auto aid, the, the dispatch center will just go to the next service. There's a lot of other cool stuff coming down the pipe, too, as far as what's, can we do telehealth inside a moving rig? So things like that. And then I think at the state level, there's some buzz about moving EMS out of the Department of Health legislatively. I don't know why, I don't know if that's got any traction, I haven't seen a bill, but there's some talk about that. I don't know how that would impact EMS.
Other questions from the commission? Is there anybody here that'd like to speak about this for public comment? All right, well, we appreciate all the work you do on behalf of the citizens of Ni'aha County and your passion for emergency services that comes through. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
All right. So that takes us to item 12, which is a presentation by the Southeast Council of Governments and Keller Forbes. Good morning.
Good morning. Nice to see a couple new faces up here and some other ones as well. So we'll roll through this pretty quick. I'm assuming somebody's running this for me, or am I running this myself? Some mouse I have. I'm in control of my own destiny. Perfect. All right. CCOG is one of, sorry, I'm a little under the weather today, so my throat's a little scratchy. So CCOG is one of six planning districts. We've been around since 1970. We were, we are the only organizations that I'm aware of that exist and were created via executive order by Governor Farrar in 1970. CCOG itself has been in existence since 1972. We operate under the Joint Powers Statute, under the Joint Cooperative Agreement between all six of our counties and then our five first-class municipalities. We have 40 communities in six counties. Everyone pays dues, and it's voluntary. We don't have any taxing authority, and I'm really proud of my team to say that 100% of those counties and cities have chosen to remain members of CCOG, which shows kind of the value of the services. To give you kind of an idea of what we did in 2022, and again, this is CCOG alone. I'm going to talk a little bit about the Southeastern Development Foundation as well, and also Dakota Business Finance, which we provide staffing for and serve as boards as well. But this is just CCOG alone, about 3.1 million in revenues. Majority of that is coming from revenues of this, from the revolving loan funds and the housing, Dakota Business Finance, and the Southeastern Development Foundation. You'll see that membership only amounts for about 10% of all of those, so your dues are in there. Dues overall are just under $300,000. A majority of that comes from our first-class municipalities, at 45%, and the counties give us 33%. And then the people that use our, the communities that use our services the most are those second and third-class municipalities, and they come in at about 20% of that. So I have with me today my community development manager, Sophie Johnson, and this is her team that she heads up, project, planning department of this side of it. So we provide application assistance to all of our cities and counties. So if they need a new water system, or they need some roads updated, or sewer system, any of those kinds of things, my team would help them put together an application for that, whether that's a state revolving loan fund application, a CDBG application, rural development, any of those kinds of things as well. We had a really big year in 2022. The state got about $600 million in ARPA funds that they pushed out. So these numbers are skewed a little bit, but it gives you a total of overall. My team worked with our communities and secured over $339 million in grants and loans for our six-county region and the cities in that region as well. So for every dollar that somebody paid in dues, it was just over $1,000, $1,100 return on investment. We broke that down by county to give you a sense of where did that go. And we include all of Sioux Falls in Minnehaha County, and we've been very successful in helping them get low-interest loans for their wastewater treatment plant. So 100 and almost 150 million of that came to Minnehaha County. And then if you look at the dues that were paid in Minnehaha County, and there's your return on investment as well of 941. Sophie's team also works with land use regulations, so if you pay dues to us, we would help those cities and counties with comprehensive planning, zoning, and municipal and subdivision ordinances. Many of you have been involved in the, in the UDC for the Metropolitan Planning Organization. We serve as staff for that as well. We're the coordinating entity of that, and here's the boundary of those. And then this just kind of gives you a breakdown in 2022, how much of those funds flowed to Minnehaha County. So it's just on, just over $45,000. And those are for transportation planning efforts. I also run the South, I'm the executive director of the Southeastern Development Foundation, which was created originally to assist businesses with gap financing. So we have a lot of banks in this community, but by regulation, sometimes when there's a project, there's a gap. And so we've been very successful in putting together this loan fund. We created it in 2002. We've got over $24 million in assets in it now, so we're kind of running our own bank as well. As of 12/31, we had awarded over $45 million in loans over the years, the last 20 years, leveraged another $217 million for a $263 million impact. Just to give you a sense of what did we do, 2022 was down a little bit. Interest rate has impacted that somewhat, but we're kind of, I guess, when I say down, we're back to where we were kind of pre-COVID, which was a little bit crazy, so we're trying to get back to whatever normal used to be. So we did about $2.5 million in lending through this organization for 19 loans, 13 of those in Minnehaha County for 1.8 million. Just to give you a sense of a few of the projects that we have done in, in the community here, this is 605 Creative. This is Co-San Construction, and that was in Sioux Falls as well. In 2013, we got involved in our first housing project. In 2014, I was invited by your auditor at the time, Bob Litz, to have you guys give us the properties that you had taken back due to non-payment of taxes. And so you gifted to us five, four properties. We divided one into the fifth property, and we started redeveloping those with governor's houses. So we sell the governor's house for South Dakota Housing. They're the ones that actually build these. They're built in prison in Springfield. I don't want you to think of manufactured homes. I want you to think of two-by-six construction. I always tell people, think about custom touch homes. It's more of that. It's built on-site and then moved here. And so this program's been around since the 1990s, and we got involved with it because you have to be low-income in order to buy these houses, and the capital outlay to kind of put together and buy the lot and put in the basement and do some of those things, and just to manage the construction with a lot more than most people are able to do. So we actually have become a nonprofit developer of those. We order about 10 of them a year, and included in the price is the house, and it comes with the furnace, water heater cabinets. They'll deliver it to the site, but these are all the other ancillary things that either we as a developer had to do, or the homeowner, if they bought it personally, had to do, which was find a lot, get the building permit, line up the contractors, which during this time, when people have been so busy in the last few years, has been really difficult to do. We put in the floor coverings, the appliances, and the garage. So we've priced these at 212.5. There's an asterisk by that, and I'll get back to that in a minute. They're 1,200 square feet. They're three-bedroom, two-bath. They have a two-car garage. We put them on full unfinished basements, again, two-by-six construction, very well-built. We essentially, they're, they're turn keys, so we hand them the key when it's all done. I always try to, especially with the rise in interest rate, try to obtain additional funds from other sources to help buy down that 212.500. So there's a $12,500 low-interest loan that converts to a grant over five years through the Housing Opportunity Fund. So if they live in that house for five years, it's just 20% of it's forgiven each year, and at the fifth year, they wouldn't owe anything on that. So then that would bring the mortgage down to approximately $200,000 plus any closing costs. My board has also been good about adding, this year, we've also been giving them an additional $10,000 off the sales price and taking a third at a 0% mortgage, just to kind of help them buy down that interest rate as well. This is just some, some staging. The South Dakota Housing uses our houses a lot to do some staging, so it just gives you a sense of what do they look like when they're done. Just a few of these. And the master bedroom does have a three-quarter bath as well. So that, there are kind of three different areas we work in. The first would be the governor's house. The second would be what I'd call recycled houses. This is an, and then we have an ARPA contract with the, the third would be rehab. But this is something the city of Sioux Falls gave us. It's kind of a combo project. They gave us some funds to help buy this house on Sherman. We tore it down and put a governor's house in there and have since sold that house. So there's a new family in there, and it's done some really nice things for the neighborhood. The recycled homes are homes that somebody has acquired, and for some reason or another, they don't need those houses anymore. They want to move them. Maybe it's for development. Sometimes it's for a detention pond to put in a new road. In this case, this is a house that was given to us by Sioux Falls School District, was by Hindall City. They acquired two houses back there to put in and expand their playground. So we picked this house up and moved it up to one of my developments and rehabbed it. And when I say rehab, we'll go in and pretty much do everything, new, new foundation, new roof, new windows, new siding, all new cabinets, those kinds of things as well. This is another one that we took from the city of Sioux Falls. It was a city safety upboard. They're going to put the new safety center. So they had two houses up there, and this is one of them, and we've since moved this one and developed it as well. This house came to us from a private contractor. They acquired it and wanted to redevelop the site for commercial uses, and so we moved and redid this as well, and that's also been sold. Kind of the third leg of the stool is that we do rehab homes. Typically, these are homes that are already in place here. This one is actually a recycled home. This is in Glendale. We moved that for Sanford. This is a better idea of a rehab home. This was a house that was at the corner of Fourth and Cliff. South Dakota Housing had taken it back, had a pretty bad reputation in the neighborhood, and so we went in and cleaned it up and have sold that as well. Overall, sales that we've done each year is we've sold over 85 homes as of 12/31 for over 16 million. And if you assume all of that, that it's about 2% in taxes, that would amount to about $335,000 a year in taxes that we would generate off that construction. I also run Dakota Business Finance, the executive director of that. That's SBA 504 lending, so think about land, buildings, equipment, leasehold improvements, those kinds of things as well. Little bit different footprint on this, all of North, or all of South Dakota, all of Iowa, and then some counties in Minnesota and Nebraska as well. Typical structures, the bank would provide 50% of the financing, and then Dakota Business Finance would provide 40% through the SBA, through the sale of debentures and bonds, and the borrower would come up with 10%. Just to give you a sense of how many loans were done in South Dakota, 102 were done in South Dakota. Dakota Business Finance did over half of those by itself at 52 loans. And we've consistently been the lender of the year, and, and that was over 44 million that was done in South Dakota last year for those 52 businesses. And then this just gives you kind of a sense of where has it been going over the last several years for us. You can see during COVID, prior to COVID, we did 28 loans. That jumped up to 58 loans, and it jumped up to 102, and then we were back down to 65 last year. But there were some incentives in the CARES Act that made it very favorable, and so we don't expect that 102 is sustainable. And then this just gives you a sense of by volume, there's a 45 million there. Overall, including the other states, we did 65 million with 59 million in bonds as well. We leveraged another 112 million, and so 171 million total, over 1,000 jobs. We worked with 26 different lenders on that. And these are some of our projects. This is a really nice project because it's kind of in the downtown area where they are starting to kind of redevelop down there as well. Power and Grace Gymnastics was another one that we worked on last year. Hound's Tooth House, which is over kind of by Hy-Vee. We did their original building, and this is the second project. They bought it next door, and if you haven't been in there, it's a really nice renovation. And then we're located over kind of on the corner of Burnside and Western. We do own this building, and I am available if you've got any questions about any of that.
Questions for Lynn?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Lynn, I congratulate you on that ROI. That's quite a return on investment stat.
Don't expect that every year, Commissioner.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll hold you to that. I had a question on the, the governor's homes. You said you take 10 roughly a year is kind of your target. How many can the prisoners at Mike Durfee, what is their gross capacity that goes around the state, I imagine?
That's a great question. So it really, it really changes on how many they can push out per year. They have a certain amount of pads, but COVID has been really kind of tough on the program. You know, in previous years, you could have ordered a house, and they would have said it'll be there in probably four to six months. That wait time is now up to three years. I have, they have continued, kind of been shut down. They've got supply issues. They've got staffing issues, and then obviously with just the inmates and some of the changes going on. So we have houses that were supposed to have been delivered last year in 2022. I'm still waiting for two. For the first year, I should have mentioned, for the first year ever, we left the city of Sioux Falls and did three houses in Beersford, and I'm still waiting for one of my Beersford houses, and we've done two houses in Salem, and I'm waiting for one more Sioux Falls house. I do have my next 10 ordered and my next 10 after that ordered, and Sophie and I should probably start working on the next 10 after that. So there's a long delay, and by the time you would get qualified today and when you could actually probably receive a house. We keep a waiting list, and as people come in, we just kind of keep track of that, and as houses come up, we just go down the list and see if they're still, if they purchased something else in the interim, or they still interested. Is this an area you want to live in? But I'm going to have two more houses, the Sioux Falls house is spoken for, but the two more houses in Beersford out of the three I still have available. So if somebody would want to purchase those, those are going to be available.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you very much for the work that you guys do in the community. Thank you. All right. So that takes us to item 13, which is a presentation on Minnehaha County 4-H Programming. Nathan, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Nathan Skatson. I am the 4-H Youth Program Advisor for Minnehaha County. And today, I've got two items for you. I'm going to give you a brief overview of our county 4-H program, and then my colleague Oakley Perry is going to present on the MOU between the county and SDSU. So we'll just start by a brief explanation of what is 4-H. So it's the Youth Development Program of the Cooperative Extension System of Land Grant Universities. So that means 4-H is the nation's largest youth development organization with approximately 6 million young people enrolled in receiving education through the program. It's structured by a federal and state and county partnership, so it's a federal youth development program that's governed by each state's land grant university. So for South Dakota, that's SDSU, and it's supported by the local county government, which would be you guys. And so what's the vision of South Dakota 4-H? Through experiential learning and mentoring relationships, South Dakota 4-H prepares youth to lead lives of possibility amidst the grand challenges of our time. And if we can scroll to the, like, second, third slide? There we go. Perfect. So here's some numbers for the previous year, 2022. We had 412 enrolled members, so that means they signed up, went through the registration. There are members of community clubs that are volunteer-led, and then we had 5,000 outreach, so that's me going to an after-school program. That's us participating in community events like Egg Day at the Washington Pavilion, the Water Festival that we hold, excuse me, at USF. So then looking at that, that's about approximately 10% of Minnehaha County's youth are served by the program. This is in half from what we normally do because our office was in half for most of the year. We usually have two people in this position. My colleague left at the beginning of June, and so we have had a vacant position in our county office since then, so our numbers are down from previous years. Usually, we're looking at around 10 to 12, 15,000 youth reached each year. So then looking at volunteers, too. Certified volunteers are volunteers that go through our registration process. They have to go through a background check. These are volunteers that are working one-on-one with the youth. And then short-term helpers are all the additional adults that we rely on to ensure our program runs. So those might be folks that help judge at the Sioux Empire Fair. They might help us deliver programs out into the community with other certified volunteers, but they didn't go through the process. So using a formula given to us by SDSU, the return on investment is approximately 140, 154,000 as far as number of hours volunteer time given to the community. And then that's just some program benefits. That's a study Tufts University did a while ago, just to kind of show the long-term benefits of the 4-H program to youth. So if we go to the next slide, we just have a couple highlights that I wanted to share about our program from this last year. These are developed and, broken out into our four skill development areas that we focus on. So the first is social skill development. So one of the areas I'd like to highlight here is our shooting sports program. So this is where, once again, working with certified and trained volunteers, youth have the opportunity to learn and practice shooting air rifles, air pistols, BB guns, archery, and then shotgun in the summer doing trap shooting. We had about 100, well, we had 130 enrolled members in that program, which makes it the largest kind of chunk of what we offer in Minnehaha County 4-H. Life skill development. So we have a unique partnership with the McCrossins Boy Ranch, where we actually have a 4-H club at McCrossins. They're called the Sioux Wranglers, and they had 200. They're called the Sioux Wranglers, and they had twenty-one four-H members participate in their club this last year, and they obviously focus on horse. And so they bring out their draft horses to our horse show and do showmanship. They do, where they'll bring the wagons and they'll drive the horses around the arena, and they'll be judged on how well they control the horses. And so ten of those members also got to go to the state four-H horse show in Huron. And so that's kind of a big opportunity for those youth and a unique partnership that I like to highlight as well. So just two more here, talking about workforce skill development. So by going to the Boys and Girls Club in the Sioux Empire, I was able to introduce about four hundred youth to robotics using a simple robotics platform called Ozobots. That's a partnership I've had since I've started working in four-H in Minnehaha County with the Boys and Girls Club. And it's great, I always like to go to where the audience is, because that's a lot easier than trying to get the audience to come to you. So lastly, leadership skill development, Clover Creations is a four-H club, so that's a community club that's led by a certified volunteer. And they held a food drive this last March in twenty twenty-two and created a food pantry for the Southeast Tech Apartments for the students that are out there. And through that, they discussed food insecurity and kind of learned about how communities can come together to offer meals to each other. So just some brief highlights from twenty twenty-two. And next I'll just share on what we have planned for the spring. So we will be doing the Chicks in the Classroom program. That's where I work with teachers in K through second grade classrooms to line up incubators, line up fertilized eggs, and then go in and teach lessons for four to six weeks, depending on how fast the incubation process goes, and we hatch chicks. And so the kids get to learn about eggs, they get to go through, one of the lessons is they dissect unfertilized eggs. And then the kids end up seeing baby chicks hatch. So we kind of talk about the whole process of the hatching, and then also what happens to the chicks after they hatch. And we line up families to take all the chicks to their farms afterwards. And so that's really been a very popular program that my colleagues started and that we're going to continue on. We also participate, like I said, in some bigger community events, Sioux Empire Water Festival, Women's Science Day, Egg Days at the Pavilion, and then also continuing after-school programming with some Lutheran Social Services sites, and then the Boys and Girls Club. And then we have to start planning for the Sioux Empire Fair too, so it's coming faster than you think. So that just kind of gives you an overview of our county four-H program. We do still have a vacant position, we did hold interviews for that position about two weeks ago. We did determine that there was a candidate we'd like to extend an offer to. That process is now with South Dakota State University's HR, and we will wait patiently until we hear back from them. So before we present on the MOU, are there any questions about the county four-H program?
Commissioner Kipley?
Madam Chair, thank you. I appreciate all your work with the Boys and Girls Club, I've got two little girls that have been through some Boys and Girls Club programming, so that's definitely close to my heart. I know the Boys and Girls Club is also doing some partnerships alongside other entities like MB for after-school services with Sioux Falls School District within all the elementary schools, kind of a divide and conquer mentality. But I think it's a very collaborative spirit, and I'm sure four-H would fit in well with that, to fit in some programming at some of these schools. Is that on your radar or a plan for the next academic year?
Yep, so Rebecca Wimmer, who's heading that up with the Sioux Falls School District, she used to be the executive director of the Boys and Girls Club of the Sioux Empire. And so I do have a working relationship with her and have been in touch with her about how we can provide four-H programming in every single Sioux Falls school district after-school program. That's a lot of schools. And so when I come back to do budget talks, we'll talk about capacity and how we have opportunities in Minnehaha County. But yes, that is something that's on our radar, and we are exploring ways. Right now, we're kind of running, like I said, we're half what we normally have been as far as staffing, so nothing's going to happen until that second position gets filled, but yes, we have been in talks with that. And I have connections with folks at MB as well, who I've worked with in the past. So they know that we're a resource and we're looking to take advantage of, once again, going to where the audience is, so.
Any other questions, comments?
I have a question.
No, go ahead, Blumberg, Commissioner Blumberg.
I was just curious, on your slide, when you talk about the youth reach, the fifty thousand available county youth, who's included in that?
So that's just the youth under the age eighteen in Minnehaha County.
Does that include the city limits or outside of the city?
We just, yeah, that, we just include Minnehaha County. So just going off the census data, that's on the census.gov website.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Is there anyone here for public comment that would like to comment on this program or ask any questions? All right, thank you very much, Nathan.
Thank you.
And so the next item is to authorize the chair to sign an MOU between Minnehaha County and SDSU for four-H programming. I understand we get to hear from Oakley. Good morning.
So I'll introduce here, this is my colleague, Oakley Perry, from South Dakota State University. And his job title is County Operations and Professional Development Program Manager, which means he helps all of us at the county levels, kind of shepherd the MOU process through on the SDSU side. So I'm going to let him just give a brief explanation of why we have the MOU, what the parameters are, and then we'll be available for any questions.
Great. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you for having me this morning. So the MOU, that memorandum of understanding, is an annual agreement that South Dakota State University has with our county partners. So every single year you will see that brought before you to be signed. That agreement just initiates the process for us to provide four-H programs inside Minnehaha County. So as Nathan alluded to, he did a great job explaining it, four-H and extension as a whole is a federal program. The Smith-Leaver Act, if you care about congressional laws, authorizes states to have an extension program, that was signed in nineteen fourteen, and that delegates South Dakota State University as being the institution here in this state in charge of extension programs throughout the state. And so that's why you have that memorandum of understanding with South Dakota State University provide four-H programs. So in terms of what you are actually signing to agree to, it is essentially, we agree to help support four-H programs in Minnehaha County. Part of that is that salary cost-share piece that we have for Nathan in the second position as well, providing a secretary and support staff here in the county, that's a county hired position. And then basic like travel, supply, budget, things like that, that's the big overarching pieces that the county agrees to. But I'm happy to answer any particular questions that you all may have as well.
Any questions, Oakley? All right, is there anyone for public comment on this item? All right, if not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve the MOU.
Second. Motion and a second roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Blumberg.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you very much for coming this morning.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right, that takes us to item fifteen, which is a briefing on fourth quarter twenty twenty-two American Rescue Plan expenditures. Susan, good morning.
Good morning, Susan Beeman with the Auditor's Office. Just wanted to brief you today on the fourth quarter two thousand twenty-two ARPA expenditures. The report that you have in front of you is similar as in prior quarters that I presented to you, I just want to highlight a couple of key points. Fourth quarter expenditures were three million four hundred and seventy thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars. That breakdown of that is on that memo in the middle column. With that, our total expenditures to date through the end of twenty twenty-two is just over seventeen point three million dollars with that breakdown on the far-right column on your report. That leaves just a little bit over twenty point one million dollars left to spend. Just to remind you, we have to have that appropriated by the end of twenty twenty-four with full expenditure of the dollars by the end of twenty twenty-six. As far as new projects that are included on this report that have not been on prior quarters, that would be the bottom four on the grid. The first one, as far as new reports, would be the emergency response infrastructure project, that is the tower project with the sheriff's office. The second one is some psychiatric services at juvenile detention center. And the third item is related to the mental illness holds with Avera. And then the fourth item is related to the salary increases that were done in twenty twenty-two to help increase worker retention. Any questions on this briefing?
Any questions for Susan? Really appreciate you've done a good job keeping us updated on this. Is there anybody here for public comment on this item? All right, I think we're, thank you very much. Takes us to item sixteen, which is to authorize the chair to sign agreement documents between Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls for the alterations and renovations to the Human Services Building. Good morning.
Good morning, Commission, I'm Alicia Colura, the Chief of Clinical Health Services for Falls Community Health within the Sioux Falls Health Department. Thank you for your time today. I'm here to brief you on our updated renovation plans for the space that we co-locate with County Human Services as well as ask for your signature on a letter of federal interest for the project. For background, for the new Commissioners that I haven't had a chance to meet yet, Falls Community Health, if you haven't had a chance to tour, we provide medical, dental, and behavioral health services on a sliding fee scale, which essentially makes our services more accessible and affordable to residents who may otherwise go without healthcare. Knowing and understanding our services, it was previous county and city leaders who had the foresight to make the recommendation that County Human Services and the Sioux Falls Health Department co-locate so that we could together partner in serving residents that have similar needs. And so that, those initial cooperative agreements came about in two thousand and five, and we've been co-located since about two thousand and seven. It's fitting that I'm following the ARPA updates because these are also ARPA funds that we're visiting about today. It was in two thousand and one that the Falls Community Health also received ARPA funding for improved capital projects, and that was to the tune of about one point one million dollars, two separate buckets of money. And at that time, the county commission, when we were notified that we could receive these funds, the county commission assisted us with some documents, some landlord letters of consent that approved that we move forward, provided we cooperate in several ways, including working with the county on the proposed renovations, that the county approved the renovations, and that the city agrees to amend the cooperative agreement that we have, that we share. In April of twenty twenty-two, I came back after we had done some initial planning and shared the detailed intentions of the two funded projects, which includes remodeling existing footprint space for Falls Community Health and the Health Department on the first floor of Human Services, and then a new remodel on the second floor of the building where Multicultural Center had decided that they did not need some space any longer, which I will update in just a moment. And then most recently, on December twenty-seventh, the county approved our updated and amended cooperative agreement with the city, between the city and the county, which updates the square footage that each entity inhabits, as well as the percentage that we support for utilities, shared use spaces, and things like that. It outlines what percentage each entity pays for those things. So today, my purpose is really just to give a final update of those plans. We've really come around to how those spaces will be utilized, which is not much different, if not different at all than I just last updated you in April twenty twenty-two, and then talk about that letter of federal interest. So there are several documents attached to this agenda item. Again, one of them is the co-op agreement that was recently approved, and then some updated color mapping. Those are the maps that delineate out the city versus county versus shared square footage. For the detailed discussion of the space uses, excuse me, I'll direct you to three documents. One is named second floor space, one is named medical access, and one is named Patient Resource Center. So the second floor space is the space that was previously, I'll just wait for them to catch up. Previously occupied by Multicultural Center. In twenty twenty-two, their board relinquished the space, they decided they were not, they were going to change their service level and did not need that space any longer. And so that, it was county staff who helped identify that space as a potential expansion for the Sioux Falls Health Department, Falls Community Health. So that would be the, in the picture that you're looking at there, that would be the orange space. If you go down to the detail called second floor, just a little bit further, I think it's two more documents down. It's one of those three, I'm sorry, I didn't know they were, there's one second floor. There it is. That space will be primarily office, training, collaboration space, things like that for Health Department, Falls Community Health staff. Right now, it's a shell, essentially, it's a finished shell, but it will be, the classrooms will be combined into one and primarily office and collaboration space. The next picture that you will see is first floor medical access. This is within the existing Health Department footprint. As you walk into our patient waiting area, there is an administration front desk area. That area would be altered to include a medication access point. We're working with a national nonprofit dispensary of hope to bring patients, medications at no charge to Falls Community Health patients through this partnership. And so this provides a secure space for managing and dispensing those medications. It will have the physical attributes of a pharmacy, it will not, though, be open to the public, it will be strictly for this partnership with dispensary of hope for medications for Falls Community Health patients. It's also a limited formulary, we'll start out with about thirty medications, and we'll grow from there based on what's available and patient needs. The next picture is the detail of the Patient Resource Center. Again, this is also within the Falls Community Health footprint. This repurposes our billing and medical records area. It will combine our behavioral health outreach and navigation services so that essentially we have one team that is focused and dedicated on patients who have high social determinants of health needs. So it's essentially just co-locating or putting together several of our staff that are already on site and putting them in one area, easier for our patients to find. We can also expand some of the resources for our patients, such as a patient pantry through the
hundred and eighty thousand dollars with a closing date of February twenty 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 twenty-three. The action requested today is to release the petitioner from the joint lien with payment of three thousand five hundred and eight dollars and thirty-eight cents on the seven thousand sixteen point seven and five dollars he is responsible for, leaving the remainder of the lien two thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine and eighty cents in the amount of his ex-spouse. He is here, if you have any questions for him?
First, I'll let the Commissioners ask you any questions, does anybody have any questions for Melinda? Melinda, you do such a nice job in putting these together, Commissioner Karski?
Just going to say you did a great job in putting this together and keeping it comprehensive, thank you.
Thank you.
You broke it down, and it's very comprehensive, appreciate it.
Right, if the petitioner would like to say anything, you can stand up, you don't have to identify yourself. If there's anything you'd like to add to the application, you can certainly do so. Okay? All right, Commissioner Karski?
Sure, I raised my hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you had.
I was ready to speak anyway, so give me a second.
I, I can, that's sixth sense.
You know, when it comes to, you know, compromising liens, um, we typically have a standard of fifty percent, a, a threshold, and, um, what's being offered seems extremely reasonable. Um, a lot of this goes back ten, twelve, thirteen years. Um, I'm, I'm happy to settle for the fifty percent.
Any other comments? Is that a motion?
That would be a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further comments?
Madam Chair, I'll just, just echo those comments. This is my, uh, first rodeo with this type of issue, but definitely a thank you to Melinda and appreciate, um, in advance, petitioners work in good faith with Melinda. She is, uh, going to guide you down the right course of action here, but you've got to work with her well and, uh, follow up on what we promised to do, uh, but yeah, I think this one was well done, uh, and I'm happy to support it.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Um, roll call vote, please.
Kerski.
Aye.
Blumberg.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Hope the home purchase goes well. Congratulations.
All right, that takes us to item eighteen, legislative update. Tyler, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Tyler Clark, Commission Office. Um, this review covers the session through January nineteenth. Below are some highlights of some legislation mentioned in the previous update and also cover a few updates that are, that happened between the nineteenth and today. Um, House Bill twenty, House Bill ten fifty, which would have allowed a one-half percent of grocery receipts tax, was deferred to the forty-first day. Ten fifty-two, which would have expanded eligibility for disabled veterans and spouses, um, related to the tax relief program, was also deferred to the forty-first day. Um, if you followed the foreshadowing from last time, House Bill ten sixty-four looks to establish a task force for legal services provided to indigent parties, our public defense office. Ten ninety-eight would increase the amount of compensation for jurors from fifty dollars to eighty, plus an additional one hundred and twenty dollars per day, every additional day beyond their first five. Um, would also increase the compensation for jurors who are called to duty but not actually impaneled, um, from ten to fifty. And lastly, South Senate Bill seventy-four, which was part of the summer study for jails, uh, is to provide for the establishment of a regional jail authority. And then a few items that have happened in the last few days. Uh, House Bill ten fifty-one, if you remember from last time, would have increased the required number of veteran services officers based on the population of veterans. That bill last night was deferred to the forty-first day. Senate Bill eighty would amend the eligibility for a legal newspaper, uh, primarily in that change is to, um, allow eligibility regardless of whether the print edition is paid, it's a paid subscription or free. Um, and there's also been a number of, uh, bills dropped in the last twenty-four hours or so related to elections, um, including voter registration forms, voter record maintenance, party precinct candidates, poll watchers, and poll books. So I'll do a little more digging on those and provide an update on those next time. With that, are there any questions for me?
Any questions for Commissioner Kerski?
Just comment, I've been working with Tyler quite a bit on different legislation, ten fifty-one, Senate Bill forty, was it?
Forty-one, the housing.
Yeah, yeah, Senate Bill forty, also with Chris Jacobson at the state level. Um, as I've said before, a lot of what we have to do legislatively is defense and so far, defense has been pretty strong and unified and we've, um, have been, um, I think in a better place because of the work that's being done. So thanks to Tyler for helping put stuff together, usually very quickly because you get a phone call at nine o'clock and they want a letter or something to go out to all the legislators by ten o'clock and it's just, you know, some quick turnaround time. So, um, a lot of help and so far, we've been successful in protecting what we need to protect, my perspective.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you very much, Tyler. All right, so that takes us to opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here today who'd like to speak about something that was not on our agenda today? All right, doesn't look like it. Commission liaison reports, are there any commission liaison reports this morning? Kerski.
The Financial Action Network will be meeting again this coming Friday. It's an open meeting, have met with Tyler and Susan Beeman in Baton Kite. We've, um, kind of lined up our agenda and our materials, so looking forward to a, a good productive meeting on Friday and appreciative of everybody that's involved.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Bennega.
Uh, the WH Lions, Fairgrounds Task Force met last Monday for an hour and a half and they're meeting again this coming Monday for another hour and a half. I think that's two of ten meetings that have been scheduled, so it'll be a long process.
We appreciate those volunteers as we appreciate all the volunteers for FAN and everything else. Anyone else? Commissioner Kipley.
Madam Chair, uh, from the planning and zoning perspective, I, we, we survived a three and a half hour meeting last night, so Madam Chair, I'm, I'm, uh, rethinking my liaison assignments. No, it was, it was actually a really, it was a quality meeting and we had a great turnout. Uh, we had quite a diversity of issues, but I think for my four colleagues, your information though, um, what will be coming up is, I think we made progress on a, a couple issues in, in some form or fashion, but this, uh, this concept of bed and breakfast for the short-term rentals. Uh, Scott and the, the planning staff, I think, took a good stab at a first draft of an ordinance, so we do have the, the Planning Commission will have a hearing on that in late February and then that would presumably come to this body. But that's just one where we had a couple, um, short-term rentals on the agenda last night that would have been better served by a more modern ordinance, and so I think, uh, trying to shoehorn these into bed and breakfast is just not the right long-term answer. So we made a little bit of progress in that. And then also, we had just a, a general hearing about a potential ordinance, uh, basically coming up from the public on our, uh, issues around CO2 pipelines. So we got a twenty-some page document from members of the public, uh, that I have not had time to digest with Scott or his team, but, uh, it's conceivable, it's possible the, the Planning Commission might, uh, take a deeper look at that, but basically it was just a public input, public presentation at this time, so no, no action at, at this point. But yeah, it was a, it was a good productive meeting last night and then a reminder that we've got our, uh, joint meeting with the city, uh, with I think one agenda item from a planning zoning perspective at five o'clock today.
All right, well, thank you. We appreciate you enthusiastically putting your hands up for the planning and zoning, so thank you. Commissioner Kerski.
One more thing, Commissioner Kipley and I met with Tracy Smith from the Public Defender's Office for about forty-five minutes this morning, kind of going over, um, kind of maybe indo- indoctrinating Joe on one level as to what the public defender is and how it all works, but also a few of the, uh, Tracy had asked questions about, um, outside legal counsel, especially for, they've got a, we've got about a hundred people that they represent that are incarcerated in Pierre and Springfield and just how to best, if we can get outside legal counsel for these, so we talked about how to, maybe we could arrange for that and kind of on a trial basis, let's see how it works to use local counsel for reviews at those locations. So we might be talking about a budget amendment, but we're going to try to make it work within the budget that she currently has. And then also, I think it's House Bill ten sixty-four is the one that changes the public defenders or kind of takes a, a summer study approach to look at the, um, public defenders. And, um, Tracy has expressed an interest in being appointed to that summer study, um, so she wants to be involved in that process, so.
Great, thank you. Anything else? All right, so that takes us to non-action commission items, is there any non-action commission items? All right, so I would entertain a motion to recess.
Let's go to recess. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
The opposed, motion passes unanimously. Um, I know we have somebody here to visit with us, so why don't we, um, it's ten forty-three, at ten fifty, we will convene for executive session next door. Thank you.